Greetings, the board is back from a closed session. Oh, and we're back loud. I've never been so loud. I could use this at home. We did actually take an action on the Title V CCR Section 55938. The Board upheld the administrative determination regarding the complaint of discrimination. So there was an action in closed session. Want to report that out? And that brings us to the pledge. And I've asked Trustee Wa if she'd lead us in the pledge.
You have to me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Forward to stand, on the nation, with God, invisible, with liberty and justice.
We do have, actually, there's one agenda introduction listed, but we're going to have two. So I'll turn that over to Dr. Rocha.
Thank you, President Martin. The first introduction is listed on the agenda. The Parent Teacher Student Association Student Awardee, and I'd like to introduce the PTSA President is Estela Torres de Segres, who is one of our faculty members. And so we welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. President of the Board, Honorable Members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Rocha. As Dr. Rocha said, I am Estela Torres de Segres, and I have the honor to be the President of this great association that for me is the best association that they have in the United States, the PTA. PTA generally is only for kindergarten and elementary school, high school, but PCC as always, getting always advanced, always helping the students, it extended into the college. And it's been a great pleasure for us to represent our Pasadena City College PTSA in every event the First District has. In this case, during almost 13 years, we had been fighting to get a scholarship for one of our students. This year, we made it. And it was wonderful because when they were giving scholarships to the high schools, suddenly, they say Pasadena City College. And I stood up and I said, "Of course, we have our PTS, PCC, and we are very proud for giving this scholarship to our student Tian Jie Cheng." Very quickly, let me tell you that this scholarship only is given to students who have really achieved in academics, community service, extracurricular activities, citizenship, leadership, and job experience. And Tian Jie Cheng has already completed all of these. And we are very proud to give him this scholarship from the PTA, PCC, PTA First District. Those ladies are very tough. Don't think that they give scholarships very easy because they give $500 to students. And this year, they only gave 10 to some high schoolers and our student Tian Jie Cheng. And I'm very proud to introduce to you Tian Jie Cheng, and he's going to, in a few words, let you know how he got this scholarship.
Will you please, Tian?
Thank you, President. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tian Jie Cheng. I'm a student at Pasadena City College, and I will be a student in UC Berkeley in the fall. Go Lancer, go Bear. It's my honor to stand here as a student trustee of PTSA, of PCC, for past two years, and I'd like to share my experience with everyone here. In the past two years, I was pleasure to work with our wonderful staff and the parents in PTSA to help PCC to a better place. In the last semester, I and many parents in PTSA have made over 500 pieces of cookies to our veterans center to give our warm heart and caring for our veterans who just come from Iraq, come back from Iraq and the Middle East. It's very touching to hear their story, which they have to, they have to try to, they have to study and take care of their family at the same times. And so that, our PTSA is trying to find more programs and more, find more benefits for our veterans on campus. Besides, our PTSA right now is currently working with our high school in the district and trying to help our freshmen, who incoming freshmen to PCC, to find out a way to be successful in the college. As I was a freshman two years ago, just like all the freshman experience, was standing back and forth in the register, counselor, advisement. Right now, I'm trying to help with the new freshmen and to help with their general questions and share with my experience trying to transfer to UC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to address you, and we are very happy to have our PTSA in PCC. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And Mrs. Torres is being humble because she's putting her best foot forward, saying she's connected with PTSA. She's also, just recently, was on the school board for the Almani High School Board, representing that, one of our big feeder schools. And she was the one that first alerted us about the possibilities of us having our next meeting down at a site in Rosemead. So, a lot of great connections with you, PCC, in our area. So thank you beyond PTSA. So, thank you.
Indeed.
Okay, and another.
All right. The second, I'd like to call to the podium our new working partners and friends from Washington DC. From Cassidy Associates, it's a firm that the college has engaged for our legislative advocacy in Washington. And Jordan and Donna have been here for a couple of days. So, you're on, it's your spot.
90 seconds, right. Dr. Rocha, thank you, the board, thank you. It's our pleasure to be here. We've spent the last two days just getting our first taste of PCC. I think we've done 14 or 15 meetings in two days. Dr. Rocha and Juan Gutierrez and others have set up a really thorough learning lesson for us about what you all do here, what you do well, where your vision is, where the board wants to go, where some of the faculty want to go, where some of the different programs want to go. I've said this a number of times the last couple of days, there's 1,000 community colleges in the country or so, 90% are pretty much the same. They graduate, you know, they get job training, they get their AAs, move on to four years. And there's only a handful of schools throughout the country that do things a little bit differently, that think differently, they have different types of programs. And we really think PCC is one of those schools with some of, as an example, what we're doing with veterans or what we're doing in the sciences with stem cell research, that doesn't happen. I don't know if you all realize how unique that is in this country. You know, our firm's been doing work for 40 years, and we've represented a lot of colleges and community colleges throughout the country. And we think there are incredible opportunities for PCC and to really kind of grow some of the programs, grow federal resources that have been coming back to Pasadena for the past, you know, for decades. But, you know, this is really a good time. Even though budgets are tighter, there still are fantastic opportunities. So thank you for your hospitality. We look forward to working with you and, you know, Dr. Rocha, the board, and everyone else at PCC. So, thank you.
Great. Have a safe trip home. Thank you, Jordan. Thank you, Donna. Those are our introductions for the evening.
Okay. So we are public comment on non-agenda items, and we have some goal cards. Those, it is important, those are turned in prior to the beginning of open session. So thank you. And if the fellow officers will read those out. Trustee Brown.
So we have two.
I left the oath.
Brent Musson, to be followed by Ryan Ahary.
Good evening, President Martin and Dr. Rocha and esteemed members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Brent Musson. I am a former student of Pasadena City College and former because I just graduated as of December. I'm a proud now alum of this esteemed institution. But I'm here actually to do what I guess in church we would call a praise report. So this is how it goes. I came on campus directly after high school, 20 some odd years ago, almost 30 years ago. And I kind of lost interest in education when I started paying myself five times what my friends were making after graduating. And I figured I'd come back to school sometime soon. 22 years later, I stepped foot back on the campus. I was absolutely the lowest priority student you can imagine. I had plenty of drops. I had mediocre grades. I actually left high school early to come here, so I had a GED in hand, and that was about it. It's about the lowest priority student you could find. So when I came to register, every single class was full. Not just the ones I needed, but every single class. I worked with people in the counseling office. I worked with professors, and I plowed my way through, and I was able to finish up my coursework. And I actually was able to finish it up, it didn't take me 10 years to finish up my coursework. I got through my coursework, I needed an additional 12 units. I got those done in two semesters. And I took an additional four courses, a full load, because USC admissions required that I take a full load. They wanted to see if I was capable after two decades of not taking a single class. And so I did that, and I, by the way, in every class I've taken, I've aced it. I've got As. And when it came time to graduate, I was proud of my accomplishment. And the commencement ceremony happened to be on a Friday evening. I'm a Seventh-day Adventist Christian and a conflicted. So I approached first Dr. Rocha's office and ended up dealing directly with Dr. Bell, who was so gracious that he scheduled a one-off graduation for me. I want to tell you guys, it wasn't just come to your office, here's your diploma. It was catered. The room downstairs at the end, the circadian was reserved. We used the patio space there. We had food, we had a camera there, Dr. Bell was there, and also Dr. Thayer was there. And each of them spoke on my behalf, and it was an incredible experience. I just came here to give you guys that praise report so you'll know that Pasadena City College goes above and beyond. And it's characterized by the incredible effort of people from the bottom to the top. Every person in this university that I've dealt with along the way has been accommodating to my situation regardless of how I screwed it up in the beginning. They believed in me and believed in my future more than in my past, and I appreciate that deeply. And so I'm here to give you that report because it's important that you know, and it's important that everybody here know, the effort and the care and the vestige that the faculty here has in individual achievement and individual futures. And so because of that, I'm moving on to my next step, and it's thanks to Pasadena City College. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, Trustee Brown.
Ryan?
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Ryan Ahary. I am a graduate of Santiago Canyon College in Orange. I am a newly admitted Bruin as well. And I am the former student trustee of the Ranch of Santiago Community College District. I am the Communications Officer of the California Community College Association of Student Trustees, and I'm the External Affairs Senator for Region 8 of the Student Center for California Community Colleges. I drove about 50 miles here today in two hours of traffic to speak about a very serious issue that happened in Pasadena a while ago, and has to do with the decision to change the student calendar in the middle of the year. The Associated Students of Pasadena City College has been notifying the Student Senate, other regions throughout the state, other associate student organizations throughout the state, pleading for help with what their board has done. I spoke before and said that I am the, I'm going to UCLA now, and I'm just wondering how many students have been accepted to Cal States and UCs, and they have received rejection letters because of what's happened mid-year. What I have passed around, the secretary passed around a resolution, it is entitled "Region 8 Resolution in Solidarity with the Associated Students of Pasadena City College." I'm not going to read all of it because it's too long and I only have three minutes, but what it's saying is that we stand in solidarity with your students. We firmly request the boards to redo the process, to follow the shared governance guidelines as outlined in California Education Code, to follow the law to include representation by students, faculty, and staff, and to make sure that no other decision comes forward from this board that will harm its students when it comes to transfer and being accepted to four-year university and leaving off from the system. Long Beach City College is in Region 8. We've had our own shared governance problems. I've been very active over there to make sure that their board is redoing their process as well. They've eliminated 4,300 students and approximately 11 vocational programs. That's going to hurt Long Beach for the rest of the decade, who knows how long. But this is going to harm Pasadena as well, and this needs to be redone. The bottom line, the board's decision was, in our opinion, incorrect and erroneous, and that we are requesting this board to redo the process, allow students and faculty and staff this time to participate, and that Region 8 of the Student Center for California Community Colleges, representing 14 colleges and over 400,000 students, requests that process to be redone. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of our public comment. We will move to approval of the minutes.
Move approval of both sets of minutes?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? None, advisory vote. Thank you. Rest of the board. And that carries unanimously of members present. We are on approval of the consent items, and I'm going to turn, Tony, Dr. Fellow, I'm going to turn this over to you momentarily to work the consent items because the oath of office is coming. And I'll be honest, I think I left the oath of office where we were meeting earlier, and I have to go get it. So if you'll work on consent while I go get it, and hopefully it's there. If not, we're going to go by my memory.
The trustees want any consent item pulled for this today?
I'd like for 155B to be pulled.
Is that it? Do you want to?
Oh, okay, sure. 155B, I think we asked some questions last time about this, and this is the item for sending a faculty member to Padua, Italy for life designing and career counseling, building hope and resilience. I'm concerned about this, not just the cost of $3,000, but the statement that what people don't realize, that hope is a quality that can be taught. Graduate students, that research shows that college students with high hope graduate and compete in significantly larger numbers, and these topics are not addressed anywhere except at this program in Italy. There is a, my understanding that there is a comparable program at Stanford. And in fact, I was contacted by someone who works with this, and where the offer was made to come to this campus and to present this program to the faculty and the students free. So I don't see why we're spending $3,000 to send a faculty member to Italy for something that we can get on campus free. Now, if there's some significant difference in the two, I would change my position, but I would, I would like to, I cannot vote for this item because I cannot approve that.
Thank you, Dr. Mann.
Keep going, I'm still struggling, so.
Any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items except for the 155B at this time.
I'll move second.
We have a motion by Ms. Wa and a second by Ms. Brown. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye or press your little button. Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. At this time, we'll take up 155B. Is there a motion?
I would like to move approval of 155B with the item for the conference attendance for Cecilia Davis Anderson removed.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. I'll entertain another motion.
I'm sorry, I'm still getting caught up. You moved approval of all but the one?
Yes.
Oh, I can, I'll second that.
No, but we already, we already approved that one. Now we're looking at 155B.
We're on the one specifically. Oh, okay.
There's no second, so I'll entertain another motion.
I believe, Trustee Mann, you're asking for additional explanation of why they're moving forward? I would like to know, yes, I would like to know why we're sending someone to Italy for a program which Stanford University, is my understanding, not only has a comparable program, but had offered to do the training for our faculty, not just this one person here on this campus, at no cost at all.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Do we have an explanation?
I would ask the Assistant Superintendent.
I will offer an explanation, but, Trustee Mann, Professor Anderson is here, so I will ask if she can come to the podium and address it, and I can support that.
To answer your question, I had, I myself was not aware of the Stanford program. I'm on a listserv that deals with issues of student success, and one of the trends is to spend more time understanding how we can enculturate our students with hope and resilience and persistence and grit. You may have heard of all of those terms. And this was the first time I'd seen such a conference, so that was my main interest in going. The location, I had a feeling it was a little far away, but I was very drawn to the topic, and I pushed it forward.
And I will say for further clarification, I also was not aware of a program at Stanford, period, much less the ability for us to be able to access that at no cost. I did bring this forward. It is, I recognize, a unique and, if you will, an ordinary request, but having had the opportunity to talk with Professor Anderson, I think twice on this, and also with Dean Olivo, understanding that it's a unique and different kind of request, I think the recommendation I would still support it. I appreciate and understand your concern, Trustee Mann.
That does not satisfy me. I sent Dr. Rocha information on this program several months ago, and it was my understanding that it was maybe forwarded to Dr. Bell or to, I don't know who it was forwarded to. I would be glad to find this and send it, send it again. I understand Santa Monica College participates in this and several community colleges. It may be a little different from this one, but it is essentially the same thing. It's student success, it's directed towards students of color to help improve their competence in themselves, and it does have a component of training all the faculty, and it was, and it was offered to be free. So I'd be glad if I can find it. If not, I will contact the researcher from Stanford again, and we'll get more information on it.
Have you paid for registration already?
I have. It starts in a couple of weeks.
The 20th. Yeah. The wishes of the trustees at this point?
Well, I'll move that we approve the consent item just because of the circumstances, but I would also would like maybe for the future that we pay more attention to these requisitions before they come through.
I'm going to second that because I think you've paid the fees, and this should have been decided months ago. And so I will second that for approval. Pardon?
I have a question.
Mr. Martin?
Is there a possibility of getting a refund?
That I do not know.
The refund time has passed. It was Friday.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
Yeah. If you'll let me.
Mr. Martin?
So I'm kind of with Trustee Brown. I was going to vote no on this, but in essence, voting no doesn't accomplish what we want of saving the money because it's already too late. So because of the circumstances, I'll support it. The next one like this, I don't think I could, because it's a lot of money to send somebody, one person to Italy when there's better alternatives. So, but in essence, voting no, we don't save the money, we're just, I'm going to hope that the board's verbal warning is sufficient to the college on this case instead of trying to make the statement through a no vote.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Advisory vote? Please, turn the lights. And we have, one, two, three, four, two, one. Thank you.
Okay, back to Gavel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Fellow. We are at the oath of office, and so I'm going to ask our trustee-elect, Simon Fraser, I think, let's just walk over here. So if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Simon Fraser.
I, Simon Fraser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations or purposes of evasion.
Without any mental reservations or purposes of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties which I am about to enter.
And congratulations. And Simon, you're going to move from one chair to another, and I am confident that you will well and faithfully discharge these duties because I've been seeing you in action. So if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you so much.
If it's yours.
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You know, I've been serving with the Associated Students now for a couple of years, and this is a very different position, serving with you all as colleagues now instead of as a representative of students from the shared governance point of view. It's a challenge that I'm looking forward to undertaking, and I'm looking forward to entering into that arrangement with each and every one of you. I do have to say thank you very much to my predecessor, Hannah Israel, who is a huge inspiration to everything that I did in student government, in participation at the college level, and I hope to be as good an example as Hannah was to the college as I can be. So thank you very much to Hannah, and thank you to the board. Thank you.
Okay, and as she is, as she is leaving the chair, a well-warmed chair, I want to express the board's appreciation to Hannah, who has been extremely dedicated, caring, always there, student trustee, speaking for students in many, many cases, and so you've done an exceptional job. We have a little something in the mail. And I understand it's not tickets, so you have nothing to worry about. So we'll wait for that express delivery whenever it arrives. But I want to say thank you for your year of service. You've definitely represented students, and you've been in there swinging, and we appreciate that, Hannah. So let's hear it one more time. So with a new trustee comes the annual review of the student trustee privileges with discussion and possible action to continue those same privileges another year. I'm going to turn that over to you, Dr. Rocha, to see if there's any comments or anything, and then I'll open it to the board.
Yes, you see, under item G, the board bylaw number 1030, which covers the student trustee, and the recommendation is to approve it without change.
Okay, is there any discussion from, from the board? And Simon, that includes you, of course. I see you reaching for that white thing. You get to push it for the first time. But the train's on the track, it could work. Okay, go ahead.
I would like to, with the privileges. I would like to, with the privileges I currently have, move continuance of the privileges.
There you go. That's using the status quo. That's great. Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Will be Dr. Fellows and Dr. Mann.
I just wanted to speak to the motion just very briefly and indicate that the, we have had outstanding student trustees on the board as long as I have been on the board. Many of them have gone to major universities, have done very, very well, and we, over the, over the period of years, as the law has changed and the what privileges the student trustees have changed, we have expanded it, and that we do afford the student trustee the maximum that we are legally permitted to, which I think is a good thing, and, and anyone who wants to know what it is can read the bylaw.
Any further discussion on the motion at student advisory vote? All the rest of the board? Okay, so that carries unanimously of board members present. That brings us to the nomination for the CCLC Distinguished Alumni Award. Discussion with possible action. I'm going to look to you, but I know, I think in some ways, don't we have you, trustee Wa, to thank for this, so. But Dr. Rocha?
Yes, the, the item is item H in the agenda, and it is actually a ratification. It is the forwarding the nomination by the board and the college of Ruth Catalico Ashley as the distinguished alumni of the year. Every year, the CCLC has a, its annual conference in the fall, and receives nominations from throughout the state, and this very worthy nomination came forward from trustee Wa, and I'm appreciative to trustee Wa for it and to staff for preparing the nomination, and it is now in front of CCLC. So trustee Wa, anything to add?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to add that, you know, I became aware of Ruth Catalico Ashley through colleagues up in Northern California where she is now working, but a number of our, our CCL colleagues, as well as other staff members, had recommended her. I had a chance to meet her, and she is certainly a really outstanding alumni, and, and when I became aware that she was actually a Pasadena City College alumni, it just, you know, it really highlighted that this is someone that we should rightfully be proud of. If you read her biography, she's just had an outstanding career in the legal field and is now chairing the seven legal academies at the Deansah High School. So, but she has a, a long, long resume of awards that she's won and recognitions, which I was limited to 200 words on this, but, so it doesn't really, this doesn't even represent half of what she has accomplished. So I want to thank Dr. Rocha and the staff for forwarding this at my request.
So in essence, we don't even need a board action, but we should. Maybe perhaps just support.
Recommend a ratification vote?
A ratification vote, so if there's a motion to ratify this.
Like to move to ratify.
Thank you, trustee Wa. A second.
I'll second.
Trustee Brown. Any further discussion? Advisory vote? All the rest, remainder of the board? So that carries unanimously of members present. So thank you trustee Wa for looking out and putting those pieces together on our behalf. Item I, adoption of the education protection account funding and expenditures. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, thank you again. The item I is actually a pro forma action that comes out of the actual Education Protection Act, which is part of the formal name of what everybody knows as Prop 30. And Prop 30 requires, first of all, Prop 30 will, it hasn't yet, but will restore some funds to the college, 16 million, 16.2 million dollars, and that the Educational Protection Act and this action that we put before you for your approval is to ensure compliance with the law, that these funds are all used for what Prop 30 intended, which is for, for student instructional purposes. So I think I've stated it as succinctly as I can, and I'd ask Assistant Superintendent Miller if there's anything else that he would add.
No, that's pretty much the gist of what we're doing here. I'll just say in the back of the, of the item I is the official document, and it shows that the 16,194,238 dollars will be spent on instructional activities. We are required by law not to expend any of these funds in any kind of administrative support, whether it be management positions or administrative functions at all. Every one of these dollars goes into the classroom as the, as the voting public mandated in Proposition 30. The official name is the Schools and Local Public Safety Protection Act, and the funding mechanism is something known as the Education Protection Account.
Okay, then open to the board for discussion, trustee Fraser.
Thank you. I just want to clarify and make sure I'm clear that the, the board received a few months ago a list of priorities for Prop 30 money that would split the several million dollars amongst a set of programs, and so this is the bulk amount, but those priorities that the board approved still apply?
Absolutely, yes. In fact, the bulk of that money was about 6.7 million at the time, and we were just sort of estimating. There's a whole lot as to how that 16.1 million dollar number came to bear, and there's even further information, but the bottom line is, is that all of the, the bulk of that money went to instructional activities, and all of the 16.1 million we received must go to classroom activities.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve. Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Okay, advisory vote? Remainder of the board? Whoops, sorry. Okay, so that carries unanimously of members present. The, we have a public hearing and adoption of fiscal year 2013, 14 tentative budget. Dr. Rocha, I'll let you set that up, and then I'll open the public hearing after you've explained what you need to explain on it.
Yes. What we are conducting the hearing and asking the board to adopt is a routine item that comes every time at this year, early in June, before the actual official state budget is approved. The adoption of a, of a new budget occurs in two steps. One, which is step, this step, which is essentially the spending authority to basically take this year's budget, roll it over with some changes that have been enumerated, so that we can continue spending and running the college starting July 1st. Around June 15th or thereabouts, the state legislature and the, and the governor will sign a new budget if they're on time, and then we will take that budget and develop a comprehensive proposed budget for 2013, 2014 fiscal year, which will come to the board sometime in August or September. So this is step one of a normal process. You have all the information in front of you. That's to conduct the hearing, and any questions, of course, we are ready to respond to.
Okay, so I will officially open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing none, I will officially close the public hearing. And I don't believe, is there a poss, we need an action to approve the tentative budget?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the budget.
Thank you. Second by trustee Wa. Discussion, advisory vote?
I had my light on for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, trustee Mann.
I was just going to say that I, I just hate for this to go through without a little bit of, of discussion, and I just want to reiterate what I'm sure is right. This, this essentially is a rollover budget, and the money from Proposition 30, which we just got, has been added in. Is that correct, or is this the proposition money from last year?
Yes. This is, this is what is commonly known as a spending authority budget. Because we're in this fiscal year, right, which ends on June 30th, which actually ends in three and a half weeks. So we will not have a final approved, the so-called, what I call the big book budget, which we put before the board in late August or September, but between now and when the board approves the final 13, 14 budget, we need to have authority to spend money, make payroll, do all the things around the house that we need to do. So that's what this approval enables us to do.
And if I may add to very specifically answer Dr. Mann's question, the tentative budget is exactly as Dr. Rocha has described, but the, but as he said in his opening statements, there had been some adjustments made to this. One of the adjustments was to include the 12, 13 EPA Prop 30 money that we know is coming our way. So that's one of the, the adjustments that has been made here, and there's a couple of other, if you, if you will, broad tentative budget assumptions that we're aware of right now that we've included in this, but over the next 60 days, as we get further information from the state, as we continue our budget development process in-house here, we will bring back to the board a very well-articulated, described, final budget for your consideration.
Okay, and then the next question that I had is, so, and I think Dr. Rocha answered it, but I'll go ahead and ask it. So any expenditures made after July 1st will be from this budget, correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
That is correct. We will be closing. The book's on 12, 13. There might be some follow, but for the most, this is the spending authority, as Dr. Rocha mentioned, that allows us to enter into our new fiscal year with the board, board's authorization.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, advisory vote on the motion? Remainder of the board? Carries unanimously of all members present. We have a item K, which is the refinancing of general obligation bond, 2006 B bonds. I see Rod Carter here, but I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Rocha.
Yeah, well, very briefly, I'd turn it over to the Assistant Superintendent. Yes, Mr. Carter is here, and we'll, we'll call him forward. But you should have in your packet a spiral bound that looks like this, and I would say that this, this particular recommendation comes forward as the result of a thorough review and lengthy meeting by the Budget and Technology Committee. I want to thank especially trustee Baum, who's not with us tonight, for chairing that committee, and trustee Brown and trustee Wa were members of the Budget and Technology Committee, and so the information that is before you tonight was reviewed with the board's Budget and Technology Committee in copious detail, and here we are to present it to the full board.
Exactly, and I'm going to do a very brief presentation for some people who do not know who Mr. Carter is and his associate Christina Long. Rod Carter is the managing director in the Los Angeles Office of RBC Capital Markets. Mr. Carter's been involved with our Community College District General Obligation Bond Program since the district's 2002 election. Some of Mr. Carter's other education clients include Long Beach City College, LA County Office of Education, Santa Monica Community College District, and POSD. In fact, they've just finished some business with both PSD and Santa Monica in the last couple of days. He's also assisted in several successful passages of general obligation bond measures for California schools and community colleges. His associate is Christina Long. She's also in the LA office, and Ms. Long also works exclusively with school and community college districts in California, having completed over $1 billion of general obligation bond financings on behalf of California schools and community colleges. So we are well represented by extremely well-qualified representatives. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rod and Christina.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Mr. Dr. Rocha, Mr. Martin, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here. We'll start you off on page one. Let me also just add, you know, this is my first time in this, in this boardroom, and it's very impressive with the screens, and it's very nicely done. Very impressive. I remember your other boardroom. As you know, the board, the voters in the community gave you authorization for 150 million bonds, the election held back in March 5th, 2002. It was passed by the voters at approximately 69.84 percent. Much like when you refinance your mortgage, interest rates have dropped significantly. They've been at an all-time low for some time. I turned to page two of the presentation and mentioned that right now, your bonds that we're refinancing were done originally at interest rates ranging from 4.5% to 5.25%, which were good at the time. Right now, if we were to refinance your bonds, we're looking at about 2.5%. So that would be a savings in your borrowing cost. All these savings would go directly to the taxpayer. None of it could be had by the district itself. So it would simply be good public policy, that's all. The industry standard when you do a refinancing of a public municipal bond is that if you can reduce your debt service by 3%, that's usually the go-ahead to proceed. When we started this process chatting with the board subcommittee and with staff, we were at 6.35%, as you can see here. Those savings are net of all costs, net of all costs. We've itemized the cost of issuance, which are standard, on page three. So those savings are net of all cost. On this last and final page, we've outlined some refinancing considerations. What to consider when you do a refinancing for public agency? Takes approximately eight to 10 weeks to complete. It requires board approval and staff contribution of time. While the 3.1 million debt service savings do not directly benefit the district, a refinancing does demonstrate to the public that the district is aware of its fiscal responsibilities, the stewards of public funds. While interest rates are not expected to increase dramatically during the course of the refinancing process, they could increase with unexpected market events happening. If this economy improves, rates are going to rise, and if you've been watching the talking heads on the financial stations of late, rates have begun to rise. Mortgage rates have begun to rise, and most interest rates across all asset classes have begun to rise. Will that continue? It's hard to say. Another consideration is that interest rates could continue to fall. They could fall further. Rates have risen in the last couple of days. We priced some bonds today, as Mr. Miller mentioned, for Santa Monica Community College. And while we started the process with them about a month or so ago, this was strictly a refinancing of existing bonds, no new money. The savings were not as great as it was when we started the process, but they decided to proceed, and we were able to give significant savings to the taxpayers of that particular district. The table below on this page shows some sensitivity analysis, if rates were to go down 10 basis points from the rates when we started this process, or if rates were to rise 10 basis points when we started the process. These are as of April, when we started talking to the staff and to the subcommittee of the board. Right now, rates are higher. As you can see, we like to look at the savings of par refunded. So how much are we actually reducing debt service by? And in the center column, you can see it's 6.35. Right now, if we were to do it in today's rates, we'd be at 4.9%. We'd be reducing the debt servicing to taxpayers by 4.9%, still above the, the industry standard of 3%.
But we're already off the chart, right? The, the right column isn't really.
Correct.
Or one column to the right of the right column.
That is correct, Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Because rates have ridden, risen. Now, July, June and July are big months for redemptions of coupon payments for municipal bonds. So there's going to be a lot of money flowing into bond funds, which could see a decline in interest rates in municipal bond. Can't guarantee it. We'll have to wait and see, but it could happen.
So at, at this point, what we're asking the board to do is to indicate if it is interested in allowing staff working with Mr. Carter and his team to proceed, and then we would bring back a formal action for the board to approve at the July 17th meeting. And, and that's basically what we're asking for this evening. Okay, trustee Mann?
Yes, I, I have a question. I think I understand this, but I have, it has been raised by some constituents of mine who saw this item. When people refinance their house, they often take out extra money, and so someone asked me, are, in this refinancing, are you increasing the amount of the bond beyond the 150 million dollar authorized? It's my understanding we are not. Is that, am I correct on that, Mr.?
You are not getting any additional funds out of this. The last time we refinanced some bonds, Mr., Mrs. Mann, you may remember, Mrs. Mann, that we were able to get some additional project funds for the district. But this time, Mrs. Mann, we are not able to do that anymore. So this is just a refinancing.
Right, and when we got the additional projects... And when we got the additional project funds for the district, that did not increase the amount of the bond. That was just...
That's correct.
That was just extra money the district could use for other projects.
That's correct. Savings were just being given partly to the district. Now they have to all go to the taxpayer.
Right. And so if we do this, the amount of the bond will still be 150 million, which is the legal limit.
That's correct, Mrs. Mann.
Thank you. I just wanted that to go on record because those questions have been raised.
Sure.
Thank you for those questions. Any other questions?
Oops. I wanted to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Why don't you make a motion? We'll get a second, and then I have a question.
So I move that we direct administrator to proceed and do the paperwork required for us to refinance these bonds.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Brown. And we have a second from Trustee Wa. I have a simple question, and I'm afraid you're going to give a simple answer, and I won't understand it at all. On page eight, it lists all the series, and it lists series, 2006 Series B, 65 million, and then it's got a call date of August 1st of 2016.
Page eight?
Page eight of section two, to be more specific. But...
Let me see. Thank you. Okay. Got it. Okay. I'm on with you.
So my question is, that seems like that's the series we're refinancing, and yet the call date is August 1st, 16. How do you refinance it if you can't call them back to refinance it?
Sure. Unlike the mortgage, which you can pay off immediately, with municipal bonds, there's a call date. And so we sell new bonds. We sell new bonds that fund an escrow. That escrow pays the old bonds until the call date, and then it retires the old bonds.
Okay. Thank you.
But once we've sold the new bonds, the old bonds, and the legal term is de feesed. They're off your books. Bond Council gives opinion that these bonds have been fully satisfied and are no longer an obligation of the district. And we have an accounting firm double, triple, quadruple-check the numbers to make sure the escrow is sufficient.
Thank you. That explains it very well. And I understood. Okay. We have a motion. Is there any further discussion? Look for an advisory vote. The rest of the board, if you will. Okay. So that carries unanimously with the advisory vote abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now progressing to the approval of additions and deletions to the credit and non-credit curriculum. This is item L. Dr. Rocha.
Yes. Thank you, President Martin. You see, the recommendations was come with the strongest possible approval of the administration and academic affairs. I might point out the extraordinary breadth of the work here in curriculum, and congratulate the faculty of Senate in the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, and ask President Hanvey if he has anything to add to that.
Just to compliment the great work that Carrie and her committee have done.
Okay. We're going to start with Trustee Frazier.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the deletion for summer 14, and specifically, the certificate in makeup One of my many talents, once upon a time, was that I did theater makeup and film makeup for special effects, and I know that these types of classes were very valuable for industry work. So my question would be, because it says here that we're looking forward to a revision that will include an option for the makeup course, how soon can we expect that type of revision to make sure that we're meeting industry demands?
That's, Dean Jim Arnewine is here today. Good to see him, and I'm sure that he can give his expert view on that.
We've been working to tidy up our certificates. Right now, if you look at the Theater Tech Certificate and the Makeup Technology Certificate, they're identical except for one additional course in the makeup. We still offer that course, but we want to get our certificates tidier and easier to find and easier to complete and all that. So we still offer that course. And we're also trying to align our certificates a little better with the AAT degrees, because most of the courses overlap. So we haven't taken away any courses we offer. It's just to align our certificates and make them simpler.
Maybe I can clarify my question a teensy bit, then. Will the, because it says here that it's effective summer for 14, so does that mean that by summer 14, we can expect to see a Theater Technology Certificate that includes that option? And so that there won't be a gap in a certificate that offers this additional makeup option?
We'll be working on it this summer, and we've already talked with Mr. Davila that we'll be working on those. So depends on how quickly that process goes. There are extra steps to take. If we're creating a new certificate, we might have to go to LODO, the Los Angeles Orange County Workforce Development League, and sometimes that takes time. So we would have to have that done in the fall. So we'll make our attempts at that, but I can't guarantee that that will be there. But I'd like to emphasize that we still do have our Theater Tech Certificate. It has as an option, I have to look at either an option or requirement of the introductory makeup class. And the only difference is that second-level makeup class, which we still offer.
Did that answer your question?
It did. I would just, I guess, request that we make sure that we continue a certificate option that will allow for the makeup technology and that we don't have any gap in service in that area, I suppose.
Trustee Wa.
Yeah, I can only speak to the classes that are being offered for the CIS and Spatial Analysis, GIS. And I just really have to applaud the faculty in Senate. You know, I sit on a number of roundtables, and one of the things that we talk about is the relevance of the curriculum to the workforce needs. And the additions, I think, are just really spot-on, so I want to thank you for all your work.
Thank you. And that's coming from somebody who would know, so. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Curriculum is a trivia. The faculty, I move this.
Okay. We have a motion by Dr. Fellow, a second by Trustee Wa. Advisory vote. Remain under the board. And are you with us, Dr. Fellow? Thank you. Okay. So that carries unanimously of all members present. We are at the President's report.
Yes. Thank you, President Martin. I have no additional material other than the material that the administration has submitted in writing in your board packet and board folders. I thank the staff for that and for its cogent description of operations and initiatives. That is the sum and substance of my report.
We're going to move on to our shared governance groups, and it's always kind of, this is one of those bittersweet kind of moments here. We're excited. We have our new AS president, John Frazier. We're going to start with you and let you go first.
Thank you, President Martin. Wow. My voice is louder on here. Okay. So I'd first like to report that the Associated Students New Executive Board has been installed as of today. We had our first meeting today, but unfortunately, most of our members were out of town, and unfortunately, that's why. Hopefully, we'll be able to have a better presence at the study session for the board, and I'll be able to introduce the new board if the President is so willing. Next, the Associated Students have just returned from, actually, student trustee at the time, Israel and myself, returned from Sacramento. We were doing some lobbying efforts on AB 955 and the governor's may revision, as well as one last bill, which is AB 1358. So Assembly Bill 955 would create the option for districts to create an extension program over an intercession. And 1358 would allow for students to take to vote on an extra dollar to be added to a student representation fee for the purposes of funding a statewide student organization. So we just finished an advocacy trip on those two things, which will be for the Senate Education Committee this upcoming month. And no further reports.
Thank you. Ms. Denise Albright, Classified?
How are you? It's been a while.
Yes.
I cannot, Jeannie cannot be here tonight. She's a new grandma, so she's at home taking care of her granddaughter. I have a couple of things that I need to say. Today, the Classified Senate had their general meeting. We gave the 2013 Michael Buck House Classified Senate Scholarship to Lorraine Snyder. Our student Mildred Carrera also received the Classified Senate Scholarship for the student. Our, in July, we will be swearing in our new Classified Senate Officers, which are technical paraprofessionals, there's Deborah Cantorero and Carlos Altomarano, Tito, as everybody knows him. Clerical secretary will be Yahara De La Paz, Rosie Robertson, Anna Ha, and Jeannie Sullivan. And on August 16th, we're planning our Senate retreat. Also, I would like to thank Marco Tiers and Matthew Kiyamen for the help that they set up for us in L 106 for the new student banner training program for the students, and thanking them for having a phone installed, so I didn't have to run across the hall all day long helping the students register. But it was, the first time around, it was great, no problems. And I want to thank everybody for the help, and Bob Miller for getting us started and giving the okay. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Well, great. So I said it was bittersweet, because I think, if I'm getting my dates right, this may be the last meeting for President Hanvey.
That is correct.
And so we're, you've been a tremendous Senate president. We've really enjoyed you representing the Senate. The Senate has done a lot, obviously recognized by the state for the transfer credits and everything you've done. And so you've done a great, great service for PCC, the Senate, students, and you've led all that this year. And I just want to be the first to say thank you for a year well done. So I don't know what you're going to say, but that's what I want to say. You've done great, so thank you.
Thank you, President Martin. I had to follow that. Yeah, this is my final meeting, and I'm looking very forward to spending July with my family in Indonesia and Singapore and Malaysia, and then getting started on my first of three books that I've been having planned for quite a long time. And then in August, getting back to helping my students in the classroom. I do want to let the entire board and administration know, it's been my pleasure to serve with you all this year and to help represent the faculty and, most important, the students that I teach every day. And if I ever could be of further service, it's very easy to reach me at DAHanvey@Pasadena.edu. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Douglas?
Thank you.
Hopefully, you're not going anywhere.
Afraid not. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you, President Martin. I just want to say a couple of things. One is a shout-out to Dean Davila and all the group who helped make the STEM Expo Robotics Fair on Saturday a fabulous success. We worked with PUSD, lots of students, lots of our students, lots of their students. It was a great time. We had submarine races. We had all kinds of good stuff going on, so that was a big success. And I think Dean Davila was a big part of that, so I appreciate that. The second, I want to report that, from this perspective, the banner startups seems to be going pretty smooth, so I don't want to jinx it, but so far, so good. And so that's really nice. The Management Association is in the meet-and-confer process with Dr. Rocha, and that's going along well. And we're exploring new ways to communicate with the management team, and we're looking forward to moving forward this summer, so thanks.
Great. Thank you. We are then at future board meeting dates. Our next meeting is going to be on June 19th. We're going to go out into the districts, and this time, we will be at the Elmani High School, Union High School District. It's called the Elmani Rosemead Adult Education Center on Rosemead Boulevard in Rosemead. And so that should be an interesting, and it's going to be kind of a town hall outreach as we not only try to reach out to Rosemead, but hear from the community and work on ideas on how we can serve all our districts with a little more presence out in the districts. And so hopefully, this will be the first of several of these kinds of endeavors as we slowly go through. Trustee Wa.
Before we close, I just wanted to thank all of my colleagues. Some of you know that I did win the election for the Triple C team.
You were on my list. You were going there next. But go ahead.
I thought you were going to close.
Go ahead. No, I was just...
Well, I wanted to thank my colleagues, and especially Dr. Mann, who encouraged me to run. So those of you who may know, there were three of us who were elected, and then it was a runoff for the last two of us. So Trustee Keith from Citrus also won. But then earlier this week, I was also just notified that I was selected for the Capitol Leadership Training, Legislative Training, so one of 10 candidates from the API Caucus to go for the training. So I'll be in Sacramento a lot this month. So anyway, I wanted to thank everyone for their support on that.
You know, let's, and this is, I want to accept responsibility, because I should have had the rest of the board give their announcements, and I was just so excited to get to about that Rosemead meeting, and I just, boom. So, okay. So let's go back to where we're supposed to be on agenda. Dr. Mann, we're at, the Board of Trustees also get to make announcements, not just our shared governance, so.
Well, I want to announce that I attended this wonderful event at the Community Education Center, where one of our cosmetology students, Mailei, received this national award for a competition, I'm not exactly sure what it's called, where a cosmetology student do, carried a hairstyle and makeup. And this was a very interesting event in that all the students were there, and the student has graduated, has finished his program, and he was asked to come back because there was a question about his hours. He thought his certificate was at stake, and when he comes in, everyone starts livening and applauding. And in addition to having his picture made and getting the applause, he also won $50,000 in equipment services and so forth money. It was a huge, huge deal. I think it's the first time anyone, well, I know it's the first time anyone from Pasadena has ever won this. Mr. Frazier was there also, and I, it was really joyful and very, very, and you've never seen anyone as surprised as this man was, who thought he was getting ready to lose his license, and suddenly, he's won like the lottery.
Trustee Brown.
Well, I would like to congratulate Trustee Wa, and job well done. She certainly worked hard to get that position, and I'm so happy that we do have representation from PCC. Think it's very important for us, so congratulations once again, and keep up the good work.
Trustee Fellow.
I just wanted to mention, on Friday, I attended a meeting of business leaders and elected officials dealing with emergency preparedness. And what was interesting for me is they did a simulation of the expected San Andreas Fault earthquake, which will start in Palm Desert and go throughout the San Gabriel Valley. It will be here in three minutes, and it will be devastating. It will be shaking for three minutes. And in the fall, the San Gabriel Valley is going to have a number of meetings dealing with emergency preparedness, and I just hope we're ready.
And Trustee Wa.
Yeah, I wanted to, I attended an educational roundtable that was sponsored by CSCE District 23 this last week, and it was at the City of Hope. And there was a representative there from the governor's office speaking about the budget. But I wanted to share a couple of points that they talked about. And it was a collaboration of the K-12s and business industry and this community college. But they talked about the funding that we're getting as a result of Proposition Prop 30, as well as the increased revenues, unexpected revenues that came to the state. And one of the points that Senator Lou made was, you know, this is probably funding that we're only going to be expecting for the next two years. We don't know if this is going to be stable and ongoing funding. And so they talked about, you know, where should we direct the priorities? One of the industry leaders made a really interesting comment. She said, "There are 35,000 IT jobs in the Silicon Valley that are not being filled because we don't have skilled workers with those skills. And if we just took that money and we directed it all towards filling those jobs, then, you know, we could contribute greatly to the economy." And then the other comment that was made from the governor's office was, they're going to be looking at braided funding, and what that means is they'll look at different sources of funding and pool it and collaborate, wherever they see collaborations across broad sectors and also across geographic... and also across geographic regions, connecting the K-12s, the community colleges, and the four years with the industry. So they're encouraging everyone to move forward in those partnerships. I don't know how we'll do that. I mean, I think that I'm on the Laxta board, and that's one of the things we're looking at, is how we bring the K-12s together. But hopefully, we'll find a way to come together in these collaborations, because if we don't, you know, I think our students will lose out on some opportunities here. And then they, and they mentioned 10 sectors, but one of them was the water. They looked at health and a number of other areas. And then the last thing I want to say is, the board, I know, has invitations on the International Community College Education Internet from the Taiwan Education Forum that's being sponsored by PCC, as well as City of Pasadena, Sister Cities. So a number of people from Sister Cities have come up and congratulated PCC for taking part in it, so we expect it to be a really big event. I know it's in Dr. Bell's report, but I hope everyone will attend, and Dr. Wei wanted me to make sure that I said that to everyone, so.
Trustee Frazier.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I would like to thank the A&amp;R staff and the IT staff, the, from the student perspective, the rollout of the summer registration has been a lot better than I thought it would be, and pretty...
Oh, ye of little faith.
Well, you know, it's been night and day when you think about what it was to what we had before, and I think there are still a couple of tweaks that we have to make. But tweaks is a lot better than a complete system shutdown after 10 people tried to log on to the system, so I am very proud of the A&amp;R staff and the IT staff working so quickly on it. And I'll also just touch briefly on what trustee Mann mentioned. After attending the CEC award ceremony, I actually decided to go and try the salon for myself, and they do offer very cheap haircuts, and so I would recommend, and they're very good, actually. This is the result.
I was actually thinking to myself here, how handsome you look tonight.
Well, thank you.
And I don't know, I thought maybe the change in chairs or something, but now that you mention it...
It's the CEC. It is the Community Education Center.
You're making it clear. I thought you looked kind of handsome over there.
Thank you. But, you know, I think it's a testament to the great work they do, and the fact that it's open to the public is fantastic, so I'd encourage my colleagues and everyone to try it out and to see it for themselves.
Okay, Dr. Rocha.
Before you conclude, I just, since you mentioned future board meeting dates, I just wanted to note that Bobby Abram, executive director of the foundation, has recommended, and I think it's a good one, that sometime in the not-too-distant future, perhaps September, that we have a ceremonial joint board meeting with the foundation board. That would give us an opportunity to compare nodes. We have the momentous event of the opening of the Center for the Arts and so on and so forth. So date to be determined, but I just wanted to get that onto the public record.
Okay. So on my list now, most of the thunder's been taken, but it is really significant for Pasadena City College to continue to have representation at the league, and I want to thank trustee Wa for that. Obviously, we were served for many, many years by Dr. Mann, who eventually became president. That's important for our connections in the state, so thank you, congratulations, and I really appreciate it on behalf of the entire college. Again, I wanted to say thank you to Hannah Israel and Dustin Hanvey for your years of service. It's just like we had this thing going, all of us, don't we? So it's just like, I'm sure the new team's going to be great, but we're going to miss the old team, so we appreciate that. Okay, future agenda items. Dr. Mann.
Are we, at some point, going to have a smoking policy come back?
There, it's coming back. In fact...
Well, Christmas is coming too.
In fact, I saw...
So is the big one, as Tony pointed out. We were wondering which is going to happen first.
But not tonight. The, actually, it's wending its way. In fact, I saw this week that the Health Committee had put out a survey to the faculty, so we're making progress, and perhaps by the July meeting, we'll have something.
I'm not sure if by the July meeting, Dr. Rocha, because of the faculty being away, but the Health and Safety Standing Committee of the College Coordinating Council is actively working on this under the active leadership of Joe Buschko, faculty member, and Ken Yamouchi, or Dr. Yamouchi, our DSPS dean. So we're working on it, and we're very cognizant of the board's position on this, and you should see something as soon as be possible, given our calendar.
Thank you.
Okay, any other future agenda items? Okay, so we stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Oh, ye of little faith.